There has been a petition to certify the county auditor. Citizens have met thresholds that I move to add to Council's ballot resolution thirteen forty for questions in Snohomish County. The added ballot in the November eighth, two thousand and sixteen general election measure for voters to decide whether to change the form of municipal government from council manager form to mayor council.
So this comes into discussion. City manager, could you give us some background information on this?
Before I do that, I'd like to put a set of copies of Resolution thirteen forty since the council had this provision and now I have a hard station, so if anything, we'd like to bring along what the council has available.
Right, we just saw this tonight, and it seems like it's tonight, we put it out. You can follow along with our session.
For the background for the city council on this matter, would like to say, first of all, the city has been informed by the Elections Division, the Snohomish County Auditor's Office, that a petition to hold an election concerning a petition on municipal government to the city has been certified. And undertake law, this next step in the process is the city council to consider passing or whether we can actually set this as a ballot measure in November twenty sixteen general election. The proposed Resolution thirteen fifty, which council has for this purpose, would achieve that in the consent to the county that adopted by the city council. So the question really is, should the council pass Resolution thirteen forty in the form The other consideration that we'll discuss tonight is if the council does adopt, this is a resolution put out, there are some next steps needed as part of the processes as well. One of those steps is for the council to provide an opportunity to meet local economic committees that will be participating with the county in developing pro-con statements for the voters' pamphlet that will be distributed to all registered voters in the city prior to that election in November. Because of the timing of this certification process, we have not had yet an opportunity to advertise the opportunities for the pro-con committees. And we'll be asking the council to consider setting a special meeting sometime before August second, which is the deadline, to send those committee names to the county, so that the council will have time to review those committees. And I'll come back to that question at the end of my presentation. The ballot measure is one that is already established as language that's proposed by the Resolution that happened before you. This has been drafted by the city attorney, and is obviously a proposal to the county, not the final ballot language. The county has final view and opportunity to modify the ballot language that you see there before you get Resolution thirteen fifty, before it actually lands on the ballot. State law requires that a petition to establish such a ballot measure must be signed by at least ten percent of the registered voters, based on the number of voters who voted in the last general election. This would require a minimum of two hundred and eighteen ballot registered Snohomish voters to sign such a petition. The county's Elections Division initially certified that two hundred and twenty-one ballot signatures were validated on these petitions. They revised certification, why the county indicates that the petition now has two hundred and eighteen ballot signatures. That's the absolute minimum necessary for a ballot petition. I'd be happy to go into further cost analysis of the process, but the initial process for establishing this on the November ballot has no cost impact for the city because we already have a ballot measure, the council's aware of that November ballot. And that's for advisory vote regarding whether fireworks should be banned entirely from the possession, say, of this district. So adding another item or multiple items to the November ballot has no确定cost in the city. The additional cost will come if the voters approve the ballot measure, which would then trigger a requirement for subsequent elections to collect the mayor, several to the Snohomish County Council. And with the timing of this, it would have to require possibly a primary election for mayor, February special election, and then your final run-up election in April, October twenty seventh.
City manager, will those be special elections?
Those are both these special elections. We do not know the cost of those elections because those costs are allocated based on a number of jurisdictions that have election measures on the ballot. We don't know who's going to be on that ballot at this point, either the legislature or the county, so there's no way to plot out that cost. Maximum cost, no other agency has measures on the ballot that will be circulated for voters in Snohomish, will be up to fifty thousand dollars for each of those special elections. At this point, that is speculative, and we don't know what the actual cost will be. So the staff recommendation is to adopt Resolution thirteen fifty, requesting Snohomish County to add to the ballot of November eighth, two thousand and sixteen general election, the measure for voters to decide whether to change the form of municipal government from council manager form as currently formed to a mayor council form. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have, and to address any issues you may have about this process.
Does the council have questions about the city manager? Or a law attorney, the one? No? All right, so are we ready to go to elections to approve? The motion's on the table, it's been seconded, so all those in favor of that?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed? The motion carries. So we'll be going to the ballot in November with Resolution thirteen fifty, give the voters a chance to look at the formal government. Okay, good. So now, we're going to go back then to our regular agenda. And, oh, but first, we want to try to set a special meeting date for the pro-con committee before we vote.
Yeah, we want to call it a special meeting day. STAT's proposal is to provide as much time as possible to collect the names of those interested citizens who would like to serve on the committee. Up to three names can be selected for each of the pro-con committees. However, they can use as many resources and additional people for their committees as they prefer to do so in order to draft their ballot statements with the county. And we have a number of dates that are open between now and August second. Our staff recommendation is to have the council consider establishing that special meeting on Thursday, August twenty eighth. And we'd like to skip council's direction, or if that's an acceptable date for you at this point, so we can begin the process of advertising both that meeting date and the opportunities for self-domination for the committees.
All right, council, yes?
I meant to say July meeting.
July meeting, that's right, I wrote August. Because we have to get this in by August second, so July meeting. Does the council have anything to comment on? Does that work? Do you have any?
I'm okay.
Okay.
This room is available on that date, by the way.
All right, good. So we're looking to balance this opportunity to advertise for people for pro-con meetings versus giving them time to meet and to gather their statements to get all of this to the county by August second.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we do have a special meeting date to select pro-con state with committees on Thursday, July eighth, July twenty eighth. So that is going to be at seven o'clock?
It will, seven o'clock in this room. We'll begin advertising that on our website, probably a weekly newsletter, and social media will be tomorrow.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, council, and thank you, Stephanie and Heather. This has came up last minute, so we can handle this, and you did a great job. Thank you very much. So we're looking at the rest of the agenda, we're looking to approve the minutes, it begins on July fifth. We have both the workshop and the regular meeting. Does everybody want to give them one more time? We'll both look together, and I'm open to the motion. How's that slide, is you ready to move?
I'm ready to approve both the workshop and the regular meeting on July fifth.
All right, so it's second. Second, the council workshop, all right, is there a full discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We thank you, and again, in this house, we thank you. There's a lot of work to do these meeting minutes, and they are, it impacts a lot of work, and I thank you very much, yeah. So it's timing in the agenda for citizen comments, and I'd like to make a few comments before we start. We're very glad to have people here. The citizen comments that are coming up here are for you to talk about anything that is not on the agenda. Everybody has three minutes. We'd like you to give us your name and address if you will. If you don't want to give your name and address, that's okay, we'd like to hear from you. So just to give you a sense, if you're new to this room, who we are, we are elected officials, here's seven council members, we are here to serve you, we're elected by the people to serve you. Here's our staff here, city manager, we have city attorney, our finance director, our public works director, and somebody from our police department, and we have somebody else here. We have some other staff in the room as well. So council makes the policy decisions, we make the policy decisions, and we provide oversight and direction to our staff. So tonight's agenda is, there's copies out in the room, you can certainly see that, and we have some new procedures that we've been working for about two months, so we can hear from more citizens. So there's several opportunities to comment, three minutes each. First, these citizen comments that are coming up now, it's subject to not on the agenda. And other agenda items where comments are accepted, we're having two public hearings tonight, we welcome your comments for public hearings. We have action items, you're welcome to speak then, also discussion items, but we're not going to take citizen comments on new business or consent agenda. So basically, I'll ask for comments after staff presentation and council questions, and before the council deliberates. So we want to hear what you have to say, your comments and questions. So please sign in to speak, and indicate what agenda I'm moving towards, or if you don't want to sign up at any time, you can come forward, I'll give you an opportunity to come forward. And if we have time, and you have a new issue, we might bring up the official or new business, let's see if we have time. And we may not have immediate answers, but we'll do our best to get back to you if you have questions. So again, guidelines for your comments, in your three minutes, please respect the time and issues of civility. Comments are not for having a debate or productive dialogue. So I want you to know also, council members, we all bring individual viewpoints, but we welcome your perspectives and information, we're here as your elected officials to serve you. And I also want you to know, the council and staff respond emails and phone calls, and see the city website, we have lots of ways to reach out to you. So I have a list here, and Mr. Davis, you're going to be here, this is comments on item ten, and we're going to start with you. Morgan Davis.
Good evening, Morgan Davis, two oh six Avenue I. I'd like to comment on two subjects. The first subject is not a positive note. I have some attaboys for Yoshi, Andy, and Tim in engineering. They have finally, after six years, agreed with me on shaving the sidewalk jobs that are jutting out into the intersection of First Street, Second Street, and Avenue J. Once they complete this shaving, I see no need to make the portion of First Street a one-way street. And now, on the second subject, I read that a city planner from right here in Snohomish County, the city of Buckle Teal, will replace Owen Dennison, who left the area for the quiet life on Woodby Island. And as you know, back in April, I opposed the city spending a whopping twenty-two thousand dollars for a private recruiter to hunt nationwide for Owen's replacement. The recruiter hired was the Croftman Company, and I believe it was only Consul and Wild who agreed with me, or at least he questioned the wisdom of not looking first at Snohomish County for local talent before hiring the nationwide headhunter. However, the rest of the council rubber-stained the expensive process recommended by city manager Bowden. Coincidentally, the new planning director, like Larry Bowden, was in the newspaper business and even worked for the city of Shoreline, Larry Bowden's previous employer. So I'll quote what the mayor said back in April directly from the minutes. Quote, "It takes professional expertise to help with this recruitment." Madam Mayor, the UN effect said Larry Bowden and Pat Adams don't have any professional experience in hiring a planning director. Then why do we have a city manager being paid close to a hundred and fifty thousand per year in base salary?" And skip over something, and basically, hiring and firing is the most important duty of a city manager. And again, he could have saved twenty-two thousand by merely placing that, the Ever Herald, Seattle Times, or Tacoma News Tribune, for a planning director. It would have cost only a few hundred dollars. Finally, in summary, the city manager and consul waste taxpayer money. Twenty-five thousand for an open government report variety is already, most of them submitted by individual citizens, costing no money. Twenty-two thousand for the Croftman Company. And when the city manager could easily have recruited the planning director, what an HR director could recruit the planning director instead. And then fifteen thousand, and possibly a lot more, to the mayor's private attorney, even though the recall was withdrawn, according to today's Tribune. So where I come from, sixty-two thousand is serious money that shouldn't be wasted. And that's just for three examples since April. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. So I have Ms. Hopkins.
I don't know.
You're going to pass? Okay. I have Alicia Clifton, who should come up, and so maybe address, please.
My name is Alicia. I'd like to start off by saying to the mayor that I'm responding to one of your Facebook posts. These are your words. The kids were told the city was going to remove the skate park, but it's definitely not true, and it's too bad the kids were used to promote someone else's agenda. These are my words. I love how you took my son's expressed concerns from the last city council meeting, and dismissed them. You also turned the boys' concerns into a political blame game. Instead of taking the boys' concerns to face value, you have to say that they were lying to. I am pretty sure that I'm a concerned mother, who knows when her son is being lied to. I was there with my son when he was holding up those signs, and I made damn sure that he understood why. All my son said at the meeting on July fifth was that any construction done to the Hollow Pool or on that property would affect the skate park. He said seniors might complain about the skaters, and any new buildings would need parking lots. And if anything happened to the skate park, the kids who have a passion for skateboarding, scootering, and biking could turn to drugs and crime. Those all seem like very valuable concerns to me. The boys that express their concerns about the Hollow Pool, and which the property that the Hollow Pool stands on, the boys have very justifiable concerns about their skate park. Are the kids wrong? I don't think so. Those kids were more right than any of us adults who were in that meeting on July fifth. I wish you would give the boys the credit that they deserve for being sharp and articulate, not to mention having the guts to show up to a city council meeting. I am raising my children to have a voice, and trust me when I say this, my son will make sure that his voice is heard. I am sorry that he cannot handle when our youth is fighting for what they believe in. None of the boys ever said that the skate park was going to be torn down. The only people who kept saying that were the people sitting on the city council on July fifth. It absolutely sickens me to know that our chair talks down about the citizens of Snohomish, especially the children. Is that the type of chair we want, running our city? I believe that all voices need to be heard, even the youth, and even if we don't agree with each other. I don't believe in people making accusations about other people's children, especially when they were not there. So with that being said, I wish all the citizens of Snohomish good luck on choosing a strong mayor, or not. Thank you for letting me speak.
So let's get to your input. Jerry, you're next.
Can I have a comment?
No, I'm sorry. You're welcome to come up after what other people have come up. We're happy to hear from you guys.
Jerry, I signed up separately, but might run together a little bit, all right?
Yes.
Okay. Jerry Elaine McLean, ten eighteen Thirteenth Street, number thirty-eight, Snohomish, Washington, nine eight two nine four. Same thing. Marriage?
That's good. Thank you.
That's what he usually says.
To respect. Thank you, Jerry. Have a couple seconds if you want to take a quick thank you. Oh, there goes the red flash. Thank you.
Can you stand for while I speak?
Yes, yes, because you also signed up.
Look, Karen, as mayor of Snohomish is a good example of love, and maybe this meaning doesn't show as much, so I'd like to speak on what I've seen. Three or more years ago, when there was a controversy about whether or not Jerry can sing on First Street, a third grade boy whom I tutored with Jerry by my side told me I needed to meet the mayor. She would help us. I found her a yoga circle studio, and she did help. Along with the attorney and the city manager, Jerry can now sing on First Street whenever he wants, without a vacation in front of any business that allows him, and any businesses allow him. I've been Jerry's full-time caregiver for six-plus years, and two years later, when I needed emotional help, I came to Karen, and I said, Karen, I'd like, I would really like to be a yoga. I don't know if I can support it. She said she would not charge for Jerry, and I'm there under senior disaccount, and I go, we go together six days a week, and it's very calming for both of us, and very good for me emotionally, physically, and mentally. Jerry can be upset of before going in, completely calm when coming out. Thank you, Karen, for that. Not to mention, I've personally experienced Karen picking up trash on First Street, helping elderly, and guiding so many of us, and you know that, to take good care of ourselves, opening and opening her home to nonprofit fundraisers, and listening intently, no matter how busy she is. How many of us can say we followed that example? Yet she never would judge one of us for not doing these things. She's only supportive of everyone I've seen that leads by her example. We come here tonight to speak and to sing in gratitude for Karen as mayor, to the police for always being there and doing their very best for protecting us from crime and drugs, thank you, thank you. For the firemen who come to the homes of elderly and replace the smoke detectors and visit the vessels checking on us. To the city council, the city attorney, and the city manager, who have all worked well together to make our little city one of the brightest spots in the whole state. One of the biggest things I've learned at Karen's classes, one of the big things is, when you breathe, if you need to calm down, you make your exhales longer than your inhale. So to inhale to the count of five, and exhale to the count of seven, would calm you down. And just the opposite, if you need energy. Inhale longer than the exhale. And I've used that so many times.
And so we're going to exhale now. We're running out of time. Thank you so much for your time. So we have next, we have your better.
So it's been a long six months. I think we all have, we all respect this town. Some people may have different ideas, but at the end of the day, we all love this community. July nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, government will institute among men deriving their just power from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its power in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. I cannot speak for the entire community of Snohomish that we all love. I am here speaking for two hundred and eighteen registered voters of Snohomish. Our successful, citizen-driven petition to alter or to abolish our formal government is the first in the history of Snohomish that truly may effectively change the course of city governance. And we live by three little words, "We the people." We the people tell the government what to do, it doesn't tell us. We the people are the driver, the government is the car, and we decide where it should go, and by what route, and how fast. Almost all the world's constitutions are documents in which governments tell the people what their privileges are. Our constitution is a document in which we the people tell the government what it is allowed to do. We the people are free. Thank you. Here.
So Mike Kearns, Mike, would you like to come forward, please?
Well, not really, but I would come forward. I would like to talk about these funny deeds down there on April fourth. And I've gone to my... And I've gone to my survey company and made out a chart. I've been to a few meetings and I've seen some discussion, and I just want to clarify for everybody, and I hope, I hope this is helpful. In twenty-two, this, this is where the Boys and Girls Club is, Hall Mole Pool is somewhere in this area up here. And this is the block, Third Street, Second Street. This is the first deed, I believe, from Snohomish County, City of Snohomish, with PPO, for playground purposes only, nineteen twenty-two. This was the second deed, I think shortly thereafter, a few months, few days, weeks, I can't remember. This deed was in nineteen twenty-four, for playground purposes only. This was from Snohomish Playground Association, and the money was raised by the property from a couple in San Diego, and then they donated it to the city. Now, what's neat about all this is four times, four times, a few times, playground purposes only. It's part of the legal description on this deed, and that's very important. Let's see, so eighty-eight, right here, this area here, so did a little split. That's when playground purposes only was taken off by City of Snohomish, or Snohomish County. And then, and then they shortly thereafter, a few months later, they deeded this piece of property to the school district, the north half of lot six and fifteen, and all the way up here, and they put in the Hall Mole Pool. Now, in twenty thirteen, the school district, the same piece of property, the same legal description, the school district deeded it back to the city with new covenants on it. And then in twenty fifteen, where the Boys and Girls Club is, playground purposes only was taken off on the southern part of this parcel. I think it's real relevant that when this was created, the top one, nineteen twenty-four, those four lots for playground purposes only in the legal description, and then when the school district puts their own deeds of restriction on the property here, I'm going to contend to believe that this deed, because it was given to the city, dedicated to the city with that legal description, is going to stand. And I think right now with the, what's going on in the Hall Mole Pool area with the open market on Sundays, I think it's a direct violation of this nineteen twenty-four deed. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Coes. As you know, we're going to be discussing deeds at some point, talking here on the boardroom. Thank you. We have Bill Fulton next, would you like to come forward?
My name is Bill Fulton, and I've been a given leader in Snohomish since nineteen seventy-four. I've been president of the Chamber of Commerce, I've worked with the city council, I was on the fireboard. You can directly trace the purchase of the police station and Riverview Wildlife Sanctuary to my name, because I supported both those ideas. Recently, I've been the lead on the design, the construction, and the operation of the aquatic center, serving for the school district. That was a voluntary decision. What I want to talk about this afternoon is systems. The basis of success in any operation through the system, and in our particular case, the legal system, has made this country great. A subset of that legal concept is a corporation. That is, people like you and I, given together, we pool our money, we vote amongst ourselves to elect directors who hire professional management, and with that formula, the Engel-Saxon history has gone forward and conquered the business world. Today, we are all beneficiaries of that and of that system. The same concept has been extended to the citizens and our community across the country. We benefit from the concept of Snohomish, because we have a corporation where we've elected our city council members, we've directed them to hire professional management to run the various communities. This model has seen us well through good times and hard times. I can remember when we had to cut staff. Today, we're harvesting the benefits of our efforts. Our management team has turned our community into a viable entity. And you may have noticed that the streets are being repaired, the sewer waste problem has been addressed, and wildlife and other parts we've added. The public has spoken, the council and management is active, the long-term plan is working. Thank you, Mayor Gusek, council members, city council, city manager.